Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the September 28th session of the Bellingham City Council. We have two announcements. The first announcement is on Monday, October 5th, at 7:00 PM in the City Council chambers, the City Council holds a public hearing to take public comment regarding potential Bellingham City Council action with respect to Watcomb County ballot measures propositions 1, 2, 3, and 9. And on Monday, October 26th, at 7:00 PM, the City Council will hold a public hearing on the consideration of a petition to annex approximately 163.5 acres into the city of Bellingham. Would Phyllis McKee lead us in the flag salute?
(laughter) [inaudible]
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Terry Bornham.
Here.
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 Jack Weiss.
Here.
Okay, we will now go to our 15-minute public comment period. And before we start, make sure all the electronic devices are off, cell phones, keep the pacemakers going, don't turn those off.[83.11][83.11](laughter) And we will make sure ours are off up here. The first three names are Beatrice, I'm sorry, Pagan, Pagan? Oh Jen, I'm sorry. Faith Rashidi and Yoshi Revell.
Well, I've just come to talk about some of the city services, and I know that there's been a lot of attention to the homeless services and also the mental illness and so forth, things like that. And in my experiences of the Employment Office, Senior Senator of Upper Duty Council, many other things, I've been here for eight years, the senior center up on Lake, service up on Lakeway, is that there seems to be a lot of questions, and, well, we don't do that here, and we can refer you to somebody else, and this goes on and on and on. And I feel, and I've talked to other people also, who have had much of the same experience. And in reference to the common complaint about us, "Oh, you're not working." Well, actually, we are their job. We provide jobs for all these different people who really don't really help us at all. And the other thing that I'd like to bring up is attention to battered women. Well, I was just beaten up once, but I became disabled for a number of years. And I've thought about complaints about me and my complaints, also about, you know, losing things and getting upset about things happening and stuff. And I think because I was beaten up around the head, and the man did manage to get me around the head, that most likely there's, you know, that part may have something to do with my memory problem, and that maybe part of my brain doesn't really register with the computer, I remember a lot of other things very well. So, I'm trying to learn the computer. Anyway, I really recommend that there be a city, a whole city agency that is a citizen review board on all city and county services, and that men and women come together in neighborhoods to talk about these things, and that there not be this enmity. So, I think there are business people and lots of people who would like to have input into all the things that are going on in town. So that's pretty much what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Faith?
My name is Faith Rashidi, I just moved from Atlanta a couple months ago, and I'm here because I need help from you guys. Because, as you know, the housing, that is one of the worst things in Bellingham, and nobody do anything, unfortunately. And I was in the mayor's office, they told me that maybe you guys can concern it about this situation, because it's really, really terrible. And really, we need the help. Yeah, here is a college city, but that is not excuse, because we need the housing for everybody. That is not normal, that four months, I'm going every day, look like a second job for looking for the housing. I cannot find it. And unfortunately, nobody has any controlling on the property management. They do whatever they want. And I know everybody here, they have a hard time to finding the place to live in Bellingham. And really, I would like you guys have notice and attention what we have to do. You have a lot of homeless here, not wondering. Even if you find a job, I find a job after a week because of my banking experience, but finding the house is terrible. And nobody in the east coast that believe that four months I'm looking for the house or place for leave, and I can't. And I hope you can do something. Thank you.
Thank you. Yoshi Revell?
Hi, my name is Yoshi Revell. Thank you, members of the audience and staff, members of the City Council, Madam Mayor. For the better part of the summer, the bathroom at Maritime Heritage Park has been locked up, and there is a small place for people to go to the bathroom. I find it rather demeaning, especially to the homeless. Are we so callous that we don't serve the needs of the homeless? Many of the homeless end up urinating in the park and defecating in the park. And if you don't believe me, come with me, I will show you where it happens. Right on some of the trails. Not very attractive. First of all, it's wrong to disregard the needs of the homeless. Secondly, is that what we want to show our tourists? Defecation and urination in the park? Not a pretty sight. It is a fact of life that the way we treat the least of us is the way we treat ourselves. The Bible says, "Love our neighbor as we love ourselves." The corollary of that is the way we treat others is the way we treat ourselves. If we neglect the needs of anybody, including the homeless, that is the way we treat ourselves. You don't like that, look at the science. There are things called empathy centers in our brains, we have things called altruism genes in our DNA, we have things called mirror neurons. Whether we believe that God created us that way, or it was evolution, we are made to survive as a group. We are genetically programmed for group survival. Everybody in the group. Whether it's the homeless, or the unborn, or people in prison, or immigrants, or anybody, we are genetically programmed to survive as a group. And when we neglect anybody, we all suffer. Because in order to neglect the needs of other people, we have to neglect our own needs. It is impossible for us to neglect somebody else's needs and not neglect our own. If we want to know where addiction comes from, whether it's to alcohol, or drugs, or food, or money, or any other addiction, sex, whatever the addiction is, it becomes, it happens because we have forgotten who we are, we have forgotten kindness, basic decency. We were born to be kind with each other, everybody. Nobody should be excluded. If we exclude anybody, we cause ourselves harm. Thank you very much for your time, and I wish you all a pleasant evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Yoshi. Jonathan, did you sign up for, you signed up the public hearing one, did you wish to speak under public comment?
I meant for the, for the chairman.
Sure. Go ahead, come on down, and then Wendy, you'll go after him.
Good evening again to the members of the council. Thanks so much for allowing me the time to speak today. As you know, I, and I guess probably more for the audience, I represent Uber Operations Manager there, and I have responsibility for Bellingham. I do want everybody to know that we're absolutely thrilled for the possibility of bringing Uber to Bellingham, and we're deeply appreciative of your commitment to expanding transportation options in this city. We support the spirit of the regulations before you, their commitment to safety and acknowledgement of the new TNC model. We found Bellingham to be an extremely forward-thinking community, and that's why we think that Uber is a natural fit here. We do have some small concerns based on going through, and we just wanted to clarify them. Background checks, there's certainly a lot of discussion on this earlier today, and certainly it's important because safety is critical to both of our sides on this. Our background, as we discussed earlier, our background check vendors, which are accredited through the National Association of Professional Background Check Screeners, pull background checks to the Consumer Report Database. Based on state law, that search is limited of Consumer Report Databases to seven years. And so we just wanted to make sure that we're very clear in understanding that. I think that the proposed amendment generally addresses that. Next is on insurance. The insurance language of the ordinance has some potential confusion between responsibilities of TNCs and those driving the vehicles that might not be compliant with state laws passed under SB 5550. It's really just kind of a question of some minor wording, and we really want our legal team and the staff to just talk this over once more, one more time, because we're aligned on intent. Like, we understand the intent of it, but our legal team thinks that there's maybe just an accidental implication in there that might not be in alignment with the law. Finally, we also thought that penalties for drivers, Uber recognizes that the intent of the council is to ensure that individuals comply with four higher regulations. We do have some concern that the punishments proposed might be overly punitive for somebody who might commit maybe a minor offense, and they'd be classified by misdemeanors, or nine days in jail is really the only punishment that's levied in the ordinance. We would suggest that maybe a more graduated system, based on severity and number of offenses, might be something to be considered for all four higher vehicles as we move forward, that when we think of retirees or somebody's grandmother driving a vehicle and they have a minor offense, that they be threatened with nine days in jail might not be necessary. That said, the most important thing to take away, that we certainly are excited to continue to work with you and the community to make ride sharing as benefits a reality in Bellingham. Thank you again for all your hard work, and the staff's hard work and commitment to welcoming TNCs to the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. Wendy Harris?
Wendy Harris, I'm here to speak tonight about the Economic Development Strategic Action Plan that you'll be discussing this evening, to tell you that I strongly oppose it. And though I'm one person, I know from talking to a lot of other people, I represent the voice of many of your constituents. I don't agree with the mayor, with all due respect, that her primary, or one of her primary goals is to promote economic development. If you look at the Bellingham Municipal Code, it defines the responsibilities of the mayor as overseeing and administering the different city departments. And none of those city departments are dedicated to economic development of a business community. And what concerns me the most is it's being done at a cost to the public, because the public is being asked to fund these infrastructures that are part of the plan, to fund the incentives that are part of the plan, and I'd like to see public funding going to public use, and I'd like to see our primary goal of government to protect public health and safety, and not just environmental amenities that are fun and improve our health, if they also add to our economic climate. I mean, things are getting really twisted, and people don't realize that. And there's a connection between this and some of the concerns of the other speakers. You know, I'm also looking to buy a house, and when I look at this economic development strategic plan, what I see is really big property taxes in my future, and I'm on a fixed income, and that concerns me. And it's not going to help anybody that's looking for affordable housing. And when I look at this strategic action plan, and it talks about assuring adequate land is set aside for industrial and commercial business, that's in conflict with the citizens that have come forward and asked to have more housing built, and it's in conflict with people like me that have come here and asked us to do more to protect our environment and biodiversity, and clean air and clean water. So I'd really ask you to consider these things. It's also interesting, I'd like you to note that there is an economic development requirement in the GMA goals, but it's quite different than this. In the GMA, the purpose of the economic development goal is to lend assistance to less communities that aren't doing as well as the rest of the community, to help people that are maybe disabled, or handicapped, or disadvantaged, and certain target communities that aren't keeping up with the rest of us. But what this is, is it's a plan to help the people that are already successful, and I don't think those are the people that should get our public funding. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Thank you, everybody. Okay, we're going to go to our first presentation, our only presentation tonight, and I'm proud to introduce Brad Burdick from the Mount Baker Theater for his annual report and operations update.
Thank you, Gene. And thank you all for letting me come and talk this evening. I want to take just a second and have our board president, Skip Williams, come up and have him say just a few words. Do we have the overhead screens, we could put that on? Beautiful. All right, great, thanks.
Very few words.[1017.43][1017.43](laughter) Hello, everybody. I'm Skip Williams, President of the Board at the Mount Baker Theater, and it's really good to see so many friends here this evening. And before we start, though, I'd like to take a second to acknowledge some of the board members, the staff, and the volunteers who are here in attendance this evening. So I'm going to ask them all to stand up. And as you can see through the work of these individuals, the Mount Baker is able to provide some of the artistic services to this community. So, you can sit back down.[1068.08][1068.08](laughter) But as you have heard over the last couple of years, in general, we've been in an economic downturn. That was a surprise. And through these hard economic times, and despite record attendance and other successful programs at the theater, the theater has not been immune to the effects of this. As a result, the board, and several volunteers, and the staff, all went through a retreat last spring, and through patron interviews, board, staff, and volunteer participation, we examined all the aspects of the theater and came up with a plan of action for attacking these issues. And the areas that we looked at were performance attendance for our main stage and locally-produced repertory programs. The theater's financial sustainability development, even though we have a very good list of supporters and sponsors, the question was, how do we get beyond that and develop new relationship beyond our current supporters that will keep the theater thriving in the future? We're looking at the effective use of our current facility, examining if there's an optimum level of usage of the building that we're not tapping into yet. But more importantly, we are working on developing community relationships in our community with the city and county governments, businesses and foundations, the Greater Bellingham and Watcomb County Arts Community, and the educational community locally and regionally. Brad's presentation tonight will give you much more detailed information regarding these areas that we are trying to address internally, and we really appreciate the chance, I don't think we have done this in quite a long time, to bring you up to speed regarding what we're doing at the Mount Baker, to maintain a high standard so we can continue producing and bringing top-notch entertainment to Bellingham and Watcomb County, and be a base of support for the performing arts in our community. So, at this point, I will turn it over to Brad, and he'll give you all of the nitty-gritty details. All right.
Thank you, Skip. Okay, the annual report, let me get started by showing you pictures. This is a picture of the board from last year, and they're very hardworking, or some of them are in the audience tonight. But what you may not know is that so far, the new board that started as of July 1st has already contributed $57,000 out of their own pocket for memberships and tickets, and if you include the sponsorships and other donations that the companies that they work for have generated, it's close to $100,000 that they have helped us raise so far for this fiscal year for us. So they're really active and involved. We also have a very dedicated volunteer program that reports to the board, and we call them our stars. And you can see some pictures up here of some of them. They are ushers, they are receptionists, they help us with marketing programs, there are some of these people that are at the farmer's market. The bottom left-hand corner picture is Wacky Wickets from this past summer with the Rotary Club, when they were doing a hole out there, and they were advertising Little Shop of Horrors. There's just a lot of activities that the stars help us with throughout the year. This year, we had over 200 volunteers that contributed well over 13,000 hours to help the theater and keep things running efficiently. We also have a very good, dedicated staff. Here's a picture we took right at Curtains Up in June, when we were announcing our season for this coming year. And the staff, we have 16 and 3/4 FTEs, and on that staff, there are 11 higher education degrees with over 226 years of performing arts-related experience. We also have a union stagehand pool of over 250 people that come in and work sometime during the year on the shows, and were proudly supported by a local 15 IATSE stagehands union out of Seattle. Here's a list of some of the sponsors. This past year, we had 49 sponsors that generated well over $200,000 in contributions to help us bring the shows in and do the things that we do at the theater. And you can see some of the more specifics. These are also listed in the packet that was presented to you. We've got everything from season sponsors to series sponsors, media sponsors. We have a list of people, individuals rather than companies, that help us bring shows in and do the things that we do. We have people that are supporting our community spaces program, and they contribute to that so that we can help offset the cost of renting the encore room and other spaces to local other nonprofit organizations. And we also get in-kind contributions and matching gifts from a lot of different organizations. So we're trying to do everything we can to generate additional revenue and to expand our reach into the community and into the region. Our membership program is probably one of the most substantial membership programs in the county. We have 925 households who are members that generated over $250,000 worth of annual support. The picture with the chandelier down there is actually taken from what we call the chandelier reception. It was one of the things that we try to do to engage people and to get them involved with us. And so every year, we lower the chandelier and do the basic maintenance on it, change the bulbs out, dust it all off, make sure everything's working okay. And we thought, hmm, we could turn this into a donor event. And so when it's down now, we actually have a nice private reception with all of our members, they get a chance to see the chandelier up close and personal. We give them a dust collector and let them actually have an opportunity to get their picture taken with the chandelier. And it really makes for a memorable experience, and it gives them a reason to come and help us out, and to understand what we're trying to accomplish. Part of our mission is to preserve the theater, and that's a great way to do it. Now here's a list of all the members we have. We've got members that give $10,000 a year, we've got a lot of members that give above $2,500, a lot of them that give $1,000 or $750. You can see the Producers Club level are the people that are donating $500 annually every year. And the bulk of our members are $300 and above, and this is all $300 members here, but we also have $125 members, and down to our friends. And you can see that there's just a lot of people that really support what happens here at the theater, and they're willing to put their money behind it to help us accomplish what we're trying to do with the shows and with the programming that happens here. We also sell advertising. This is a unique publication, it's called The Spotlight Magazine, and we create a different one of these for each of the shows that we present ourselves, so about 30 shows a year. And we've got 42 different advertisers this past year that contributed $124,000 plus to support the advertisements that went into these publications. You can see the advertisers listed there. Let me talk a little bit about the growth strategy. This is a copy of our mission, and it's basically two parts. The first part is to provide arts, entertainment, and social interaction to this region. So we're trying to do broad and diverse programming, trying to touch as many people as we can with performing arts, and to have them come in and experience the theater in a special way. The other part of our mission is to preserve the theater, and we're very proud of the fact that over the last 18 years, we've put nearly $15 million of non-city revenue into the building to help support your facility. It's a great partnership between the theater and the city that keeps a unique facility available for this part of the country. We have a strategy to try to keep growing and expanding on that mission. The first step in that strategy is to increase the number of the high-quality performers that we've been able to attract. And as our reputation develops, we were able to attract even bigger names. Here's a few of the pictures. This is John Legend. We actually had him perform, I think it was the first time we've had somebody who was actually number one in two different charts, the day that he was performing on the Mount Baker Theater stage. So it's really tough to get much bigger than that. We also have Lyle Lovett, he's come in several times and performed. Recognize that. It's, who is it? (laughter) Thank you. That's who it is. Steve Martin, Edie Bruchel, and the Steep Canyon Rangers. And I was just checking to make sure you guys were still listening, so. But they did a great gala for us a couple years ago, and that's Michael McDonald, he was just here in August. Melissa Etheridge is coming in November, phenomenal talent, phenomenal singer-songwriter and guitar player. This is Ira Glass, he was here this past season, and if you've heard him on the radio station, he does a great job, and is very well-known. This is Patty Lepone. Patty is probably one of the biggest names on Broadway. She's done many major parts on Broadway, and she'll be coming here later on this year. The second strategy is to develop our own high-quality professional, what we like to call rep productions. That's where we hire the actors, we produce the show, we build it. It's not a community theater, it's a professional theater. And we have an interesting person, I want to click through on this, because he does a much better job of telling you about this than I do.
Hi, I'm Connor Pearson, a former Mount Baker Theater ticket rep. I worked at the Mount Baker for a little over two years. If you got a chance to see Little Shop of Horrors this past year, I was Seymour Cullbourn, and you got to see my first professional acting gig opposite the amazing Chauncey Trask. And on May 24th of this year, I made my Broadway debut in The Book of Mormon. A lot can happen in a year, and at the beginning of this one, I was at the Mount Baker Theater. And I'm so grateful for all of the support they gave me, and all of the faith they put in me for Little Shop of Horrors. They put a lot of trust in the actors, and in a business that can be so much about business, it's so amazing to have a theater that will not sacrifice quality, and is so driven to provide quality theatrical experiences for their audiences. provide quality theatrical experiences for their audiences. So thank you, Mount Baker Theater, and thank you to everyone who is supporting good theater in their community. Um, keep an eye out for the coming Mount Baker season, especially those summer rep shows and those Mount Baker Theater produced shows, because you never know who you're gonna see and get to say, "I saw them when? And now they're on Broadway."
He said, "And now they're on Broadway," like, like me, so. So, yeah, Connor's a special talent, a young guy that we discovered in our ticket office, of all places, but, uh, now he really is on Broadway performing in, uh, in The Book of Mormon. So it's great to be able to tell those kind of stories. And that's the kind of thing we want to do with our rep programming. We also have educational programs here. Uh, we bring students in, bus them in, uh, and we fill up the theater twice in a day, so that's about 3,000 kids a day when we're doing the educational programs. But we also have Missoula Children's Theater and we usually do three weeks of that. And I've got a couple of people here, Julie Smith and her daughter Phoebe. If you guys would come up here just for a second and talk just a second about the Missoula Children's Theater.
The first time I heard about Missoula Children's Theater was in 2009 in the Bellingham Leisure Guide when I was looking for an activity for my then-eight-year-old daughter for the summer. So I signed her up for Tortoise and the Hare and she did that first play and loved it. The next summer came around and she asked, "Mom, can I do two plays this year?" So I signed her up for, I have to look at my notes here, um, Hansel and Gretel and The Secret Garden. Then the third year, she said, "Mom, I want to do all three plays this year." So I signed her up for Jack and the Beanstalk, oh gosh, Snow White and the Seven Dwarves and Cinderella. Since that time, Phoebe has continued to do 13 of the Missoula Children's Theater plays. And it has been such a wonderful experience for her and for our entire family, uh, boosting her self-esteem and just getting her out in front of a live audience. Uh, what a wonderful experience as a, a parent to see your child up on stage. One of her lead roles was Jack of Jack and the Beanstalk. And since that time, she's been kind of fondly called Jack as her nickname. So that's something that's carried forth with her for many years now. So this last summer was her sixth consecutive year of participating in the Missoula Children's Theater. So it is our hope that you continue to fund such a wonderful program for my daughter and other children in our community. So thank you.
Um, I really like Missoula Children's Theater because it's like not, there's like no pressure at all in the environment that they give you. And it's new every year, so there's like different people every week that you get to meet and see and it gives you like a broad variety of like experiences that you get to like have with other kids and with the people that come and teach the shows in a week. And it's like really interesting to see how people can handle that, like. Um, I've had my friends do some of them with me and my friends all handle it differently. Like some of my friends will have their lines down like in a couple days and some of them will have them down the day before the play. And I just, I like that about it because it's just interesting and you get to see what other people do in that environment. And that's, yeah, I like it.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you guys coming tonight and helping with this. Um, there's a, a sample of what they do whenever they're rehearsing with, uh, with Missoula Children's Theater. Our fourth strategy is to support other community performing arts organizations by subsidizing rental space and providing expertise to help these organizations become more, uh, stable and sustainable. And this is a list of the organizations that, uh, have helped, uh, have used the Encore Room this past year in our Community Spaces program. Uh, we had over 33 organizations that utilized the room 137 times and brought in nearly 3,000 patrons in the, uh, in the Encore Room. Now, here's some of the, the details about the number of events. Uh, we continue to get busier all the time. This past year, we had 466 events in all three of the different spaces. We have the Walton Theater, the Encore Room and the Main Stage. And you can see how those things, uh, all generate about the same number of meetings or, uh, events that happen, uh, to total up to the 466, uh, uh, total. Uh, we also set a new attendance record this year with over 110,000 patrons coming through the theater doors this past year. And, uh, of course, this breaks it down, the, the purple line is the total, the red line, the second is the Main Stage, obviously, even though we only have about a third of the activity on the Main Stage, because it's such a large venue, it brings in most of the people. Uh, and then we have all of the activity in the Walton Theater in the blue and the green is the Encore Room. But this is where the money gets divided up. That big blue chunk of the pie is actually the amount of money we get from event revenue. It's rentals and from ticket sales. And, uh, we've been tracking all of this numbers, all these numbers for the last 15 years. And we've actually grown the amount of ticket revenue as a percentage of the pie from about 50% to nearly 60%. So our long-term growth strategy is really to, uh, continue to grow the ticket revenue at a, what we anticipate is a basically a 2% to 3% increase annually, but try to expand all of the other revenue streams again and, uh, and increase all of the, what we call development revenue or the non-ticket revenue, uh, so that in five years, we'll actually be back to a 50/50, more diversified position, uh, but it'll be a much bigger pie overall. So that's the goal and the strategy for what we're looking for. Um, the bottom line is that the past three years, we've actually lost money. And your packets, I didn't give you all the specific details of the expense side of this. Uh, this bottom-line figure is a, is a very simplified version of everything, but it's because we actually have a fairly, uh, complex, uh, system of books. So I'd be happy to meet with anybody individually and go over any specific details and walk you through the entire budget and how we collect, uh, information, how we track things and break down our overhead costs and our staff salary costs and things. But I couldn't put all of that into this particular presentation. This is more of an overview for you, but it, it is available and I'd love to actually do that if you're interested in doing that. Uh, the plans for this year, the board and staff are continuing to develop the next five-year comprehensive plan. I remember 19 years ago when I started at the theater, uh, we were in crisis and the city bailed us out. And they bailed us out and said, "You've got to get things fixed. Do a business plan, do a long-range plan." And we've been keeping those promises ever since then and we're working on the next version of that plan, uh, at this moment. It's part of the retreat planning process that Skip was talking about. We've also created a very conservative budget this year and it's designed to return us to a surplus position. Uh, part of that included some significant restructuring in the way we sell tickets and, uh, the initial response has been outstanding, uh, with the way we redesigned our season brochure and our, uh, our season rollout. We increased the ticket revenue by $120,000 over the same period last year. So initial ticket sales are significantly higher, uh, coming into this next season. Our membership program also went through some, uh, dramatic changes and, and that has increased, uh, the upper-level memberships dramatically already and we're just a couple of months into our season. Uh, we've also brought on a lot, a large number of new board members and we continue to target a, a wide variety of programming. So not just the big headliners that you saw earlier, but we've also got all the traditional Broadway musicals that people love. We've got the advantage of having a really big stage and so these huge productions take advantage of that. Uh, with Saturday Night Fever, Million Dollar Quartet, uh, The 42nd Street is coming in here, uh, in a couple of weeks. And, uh, we also do some unique programming like Post Secret. That's a, a young, interesting thing. Take a look at our website if you want more information about that or give me a call, I'd be happy to talk to you about it. We also have family-oriented programming. This is Stunt Dogs and I booked it specifically because it's high-quality entertainment, but the tickets are also 7.50 apiece. So if you want to bring kids or grandkids to an affordable thing, you can go for less than it takes to go to a movie, uh, to see these wonderful productions. We also have the organ. Now that picture isn't of the organ, but it's of Dennis James playing an organ and he travels internationally. He's probably one of the only, uh, remaining fully professional organist that's out there that makes a great living playing organ, but, uh, he comes in three times a year and does a silent movie with our organ. So it allows us to keep that part of the history alive for the theater. And it's actually becoming a very popular show. We sold, uh, well over goal last year and it seems like the audience is growing because a lot of people care about, uh, keeping the organ going at the Mount Baker Theater. Finally, we have acrobats and dance companies and lots of big productions because again, uh, the stage is, uh, is a great size, uh, for that, for that kind of activity. This is Pink Martini, a little bit different flavor, so if you like sort of eclectic, jazzy, classical, little mix of stuff, it's, uh, it's a really interesting blend of music and very entertaining, but a very different audience than what we've had in the past. This is astronaut Steve Robinson and he's going to be coming and talking about his time as, as an astronaut. He was actually the pilot of the space shuttle the very first time after the, uh, the Challenger explosion happened. And he had to do an unscheduled spacewalk in order to get his crew down safely. So he'll talk a little bit about that and a lot of other experiences that are going on with NASA. So you can see there's a lot of different kinds of programming. We really try to do things that'll attract a wide variety of people from all over this area. Uh, tourism matters too. We get our money from the city through the Hotel Motel Tax Fund for the management fee. And this is, these are the numbers for this past year. We had over 10,000 patrons from out of the county. We had, uh, 930 people came from out of state and in addition to that, we had over 18, 1800 people come from out of country. Now, most of those were, uh, from Canada and that was even in spite of the exchange rate. So this past year, more than 17% of the ticket purchasers were from outside of Watcomb County. So you also got a, a brochure in your packet of our season and, uh, the education program and the rep theater. Uh, so, uh, take a look at those things. Those are the shows that we present ourselves. We take a risk on and we use the revenue for that to offset all the other expenses that we have throughout the year. And with that, I'd open it up for questions if you have any.
Questions, comments, Roxanne?
Well, let me just start by saying I appreciate everything that the theater does to support Bellingham, but I wanted to add on to your presentation because there's something else that the theater does that I so sincerely appreciate in hosting community events and opening up the space for things like Kapow, where people could set their ideas free on how to improve Bellingham. But most sincerely, I wanted to thank the theater for hosting the Timothy Egan Event where author Timothy Egan came to talk about the book that he wrote about Edward Curtis, who shot photographs from yesteryear of tribal members from everywhere. I was fortunate to be able to emcee that event, but that wound up being one of the most special experiences of my life. And it was a special experience for those that attended and I can't envision a more special place.
They had a whole thousand people at that event.
Yeah. I didn't expect all those people to be there, so it was also a major opportunity for me to learn how to speak in front of that many people. But the fact that the theater offers this in a free way, it just really shows how to bring people together and also so we can appreciate the theater. So I thank you.
Thank you.
Dan?
Uh, thank you for the presentation. Thank you, board members, for coming tonight. Appreciate your service to the community. Um, I did want to ask, I had a specific question regarding the annual revenue by type on page five. Grants as a percentage of, um, revenue is a very small category and I'm just wondering whether what the challenges are there, uh, is there, um, who, who does the fund development for the organization?
Yeah, we have, uh, we have two development staff members. Uh, one handles the membership programs, the other handles, uh, advertising and, and sponsorships. Um, the, the membership director also handles the grants. And, uh, grants is a challenge for the Mount Baker Theater with the programming that we currently do. Um, we've looked for all sorts of, uh, granting organizations and, uh, with the economic downturn that's happened over the last five years, a lot of the grant funders that typically support performing arts have restricted their funds to go to new works or, uh, or types of programming that we don't currently do. There are things that we'd like to do, but we haven't gotten, uh, established enough in those areas. But if we were creating, let's say we had a playwright and we were going to produce the playwright show for the first time, there's a lot of grant money available for those kinds of performing arts. But for traditional performing arts, it's a little more, uh, restricted. And some of the, some of the grants, we get a, a significant number of grants from corporations like Fred Meyer and, uh, some of the, some of the banks that go through their foundations, but they attach themselves to the education program rather than as, uh, grants. And it's just a, a funding, um, that's an internal, um, allocation that we choose to do to try to make sure it's all, uh, the same every year. Uh, but we'd love to get more grants. Uh, we'd like to expand our development, uh, staff to make sure that, uh, there's more of, uh, expertise to go out and, and, and expand our, our resources. I think another area where we still have, uh, opportunity for expansion is in, uh, legacy giving or planned giving, where people think about us and put us in their will so that a few years from now, whenever they pass on, they can take care of their family, but they can also give some to support the theater. Um, we just, right now, don't have the staff resources to deal with that.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Pinky.
Oh, one other thing, I want to thank Pinky. She's also on our board as the ex officio member and the, the council staff liaison. She's done a great job and it's been a pleasure working with her this year.
I was just going to say some really great words, but obviously I'm biased. Uh, but, uh, I just wanted to acknowledge the work that the Mount Baker Theater does in this community. And I think some of us just sort of take it for granted that it's here in our city, but this is a world-class facility. We have incredible artists that come here and the job that the Mount Baker Theater does to represent the city of Bellingham is extraordinary. So just thank you for all the volunteers who make it happen, for the board members and for your staff, because, uh, we are extremely lucky and proud of this facility. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brad, and then all the members of the board. You took me back when you said 19 years ago we were in a mess because I was sitting here and we were.
Yep.
In a big mess.
You remember that. I remember you being there, Gene.
Yes, and believe it or not, back then, there was a certain segment of the population that said, "Let it go, we don't want it, we don't want to spend the money." Thank God, we kept it going because it is a great asset to this community and it's amazing you've been there that long.
I know.
Already, so I want to thank you and the board for, for coming.
Been a pleasure. It's, it's different every day, it's always fun. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you, Skip. Next time, Skip, you can put on a, Skip, next time you can do a little performance for us. All right? All right. Okay, we will now go to our public hearing. It's a public hearing on the adoption of emergency ordinance extending and renewing interim zoning regulations for the establishment of facilities producing, processing and retailing recreational marijuana.
I'm going to start off.
Oh, go ahead, Alan.
Alan Mariner, Deputy City Attorney, uh, with me tonight are Rick Sepler, the Planning Director, and Kurt Nabbafeld from Planning. Um, tonight's public hearing is on the ordinance, uh, interim zoning ordinance that you adopted on August 10th. Um, it's for recreational marijuana, does not deal with medical marijuana. Um, the ordinance allows the production and processing of recreational marijuana in our industrial zones and the retailing of recreational marijuana in our industrial and commercial zones, all subject to a thousand-foot buffer from schools, playgrounds, uh, and other facilities that are frequented by children. The public hearing tonight is to comply with state law, which requires us to have a public hearing within 60 days after you took that action back in August by adopting the ordinance. At the conclusion of the hearing, council can, uh, repeal, modify or leave in place the, uh, interim zoning ordinance that you've already passed. Um, since council took action in August, there've been a couple of things, uh, that have happened that council should be aware of for tonight's public hearing. Last week, the Liquor Control Board notified the city that it was removing the cap on the number of retail licenses it would issue. Um, if you remember, the city of Bellingham was previously, um, limited to six retail licenses. With the removal, removal of this cap, the market will determine the number of recreational retail shops that are in Bellingham. Liquor Control Board will begin accepting new applications for licenses beginning on October 12th and it recommends, I should say Liquor Cannabis Board, I'm sorry, I changed their name. They recommend that local jurisdictions that are concerned about the density of retail stores in their jurisdiction take action by October 12th. And if council wants staff to bring back some options on dealing with the removal of the cap, dealing with the, any limitation on density of these stores in the city, uh, we could do that at the next council meeting, but we'd need direction to do that. do that at the next council meeting, but we'd need direction to do that. The other thing that the Liquor Control Board did last week is it set a reminder to local jurisdictions, including the city of Bellingham, that except for elementary and secondary schools and playgrounds, that the local jurisdictions can reduce the 1,000-foot buffer down to as low as 100 feet. The city's ability to reduce buffers is relevant to a situation that both council and staff were notified of last week, where a proposed recreational marijuana retail store that met all requirements, including the 1,000-foot buffer, when they submitted complete applications to the city, ran into a problem when there was an arcade located within that 1,000-foot buffer after they submitted and received their city permits and actually began construction on a new store, but before the Liquor Control Board issued their license. And now, the Liquor Control Board is saying, "You're going to be located within 1,000 feet of this arcade," and is, at least at this point, appears unwilling to issue the license. So staff has drafted an amendment to the existing emergency ordinance. I handed it out to council prior to this hearing and to deal with that specific problem. And essentially, the fix provides that compliance with all our citing requirements, including the 1,000-foot buffer, occurs at the time they submit complete applications to the city, not at some later point. So that's the fix. You're going to, I think, hear some public testimony about this issue. If you decide to take action tonight and adopt this amendment to the interim zoning ordinance, I would need to read the amendment into the record per our charter. So with that, and I think staff is recommending, we looked at the situation, is recommending that council consider approving that amendment to the existing interim zoning ordinance. And with that, I'll turn it over to Kurt. I don't know, Kurt Navafeld, if you have anything else to add?
I do not, not at this time. Available for any questions, if you have any.
Okay, Rick.
If I might just add on, in all of their applications, it's time you vest, see what the rules are when your building permit comes in, the amendment before you be consistent with that.
Okay. Yeah, we'll open up the public hearing. The first speaker is Yin Ho Lai, is it Lai, Lau? Lai, excuse me.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Yin Ho Lai. I'm
Get a little bit closer to the mic, so we can hear you.
I'm a little too short for this.
There you go.
Yeah, I'm Yin Ho Lai. I'm the real estate developer for the new construction at 218 North Samish Way. I'm also co-owner of Trove Cannabis, the marijuana retail store that will be hopefully situated in that building. And I just want to thank everyone for giving me the chance to tell a little bit about my background and share my story. I grew up in Washington State. I graduated from Western Washington University with a bachelor's degree in accounting and also got my master's in business administration, also at Western, just a few years ago. Soon after graduation, I moved back down to live with my family in the Seattle area and, sorry, and decided to join public accounting and pursue my goals of becoming a certified public accountant. And during that experience, I learned a lot about what it is to run a small business and all the experiences and just what a good employer can do for the local community. And when the opportunity came up, where the people of Washington voted to legalize recreational marijuana use, my supervisor at the time and I decided, you know, we've always wanted to have our own business, and not only is this a great opportunity in a brand-new industry, but also a chance for us to apply what we've learned and how to be good stewards for the community. So we moved back up to Bellingham. It's a city that we fell so much in love with, and frankly, it's the city that we grew up and became adults. We started doing research on the zoning maps and found that there was a section on Samish Way that was zoned for marijuana retail, and we found a vacant lot at 218 North Samish Way, and immediately, you know, our eyes just lit up, and it was an opportunity for us to build something from the ground up. My family mortgaged their house and purchased a property for us back in January 2014, and we submitted our application to the Liquor and Cannabis Board, and by May 2014, we found the good news that we had won the lotto, and immediately, we began plans for construction. We worked with the city and as one of the first development projects to adopt a Samish Way urban development project. It was a very steep learning curve, and, you know, without the help of the city planning department and Public Works, there was no way we could have done it. And also, it was my first project doing construction, so you can imagine the stress I've been under. I used to have more hair, actually. And for us, the specific location was really why we decided to spend so much effort and money to build up. We held neighborhood meetings as soon as we started the process of getting permitted, and as soon as we got the building permit, we wasted no time, and we started construction like the next day. We started putting up our job site fans, started working on grading and site prep. And at this time, you know, our building is a two-unit commercial building with a single story, and the intention, because we're a small family business, limited funding, we built it so that it's structurally capable to become a three- to four-story building in the future. We have a really strong foundation, nice trusses, and it's really overly engineered for what we're doing. And, you know, at this point, we've spent close to $1 million on the project. We've spent over $70,000 in street improvements. We expanded the Samish Way driveline, put new asphalt for areas that used to be gravel. We built new sidewalks on Pasco, Samish, and Abbott Street. We've had a lot of street trees. We've put in a rain garden for stormwater mitigation. And really, at this point, last week, when we were talking to Liquor Control, Liquor and Cannabis Board, we were informed that an arcade down the street had recently opened and that our license would now be in jeopardy. Through this entire construction project, we've been very close communications with the Liquor and Cannabis Board, letting them know every stage of where we're at with construction, and we were under the assumption that we would be safe to go once we have passed all the financial checks, criminal background checks, and to find out now that an arcade opening up is going to force us out of business. This business, this property, this project, it means everything to my family, myself, my business partner, and, you know, my friends. We've received a lot of, you know, support from the neighbors and the public, and frankly, we don't really have any other avenues to go without this project. So again, you know, for us, you know, a lot of people might not like the marijuana business, whatever, but for us, you know, we're business people, and we want to show what we can do for an industry and really change the perception of it. My business partner and I, we're very involved with the community. We've been working with Sustainable Connections. We adopted a bio-retention cell on State Street, and our employees are thrilled to be a part of that. We can go clean it up and maintain it every week or so. And again, thank you for the opportunity to allow me to share the story, and I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Heather Wolf?
Heather Wolf, 230 East Champion. I represent Trove Cannabis, and we're here tonight to request that the council adopt the reduced buffer requirements for marijuana businesses as proposed by staff. As indicated, Trove Cannabis is in the final stages of construction and licensing of its marijuana retail store. When Trove chose its Samish Way location, it made sure to verify that the location was not within 1,000 feet of a school, playground, childcare center, park, library, or game arcade. What neither Trove nor anyone else could have anticipated was that a competitor would open a game arcade within 1,000 feet of Trove's location before Trove could obtain its retail marijuana license. Although the Liquor and Cannabis Board is sympathetic to Trove, it has stated that it cannot act beyond the constraint of its own rules. And it's, the Liquor and Cannabis Board's rules precludes issuance of a new marijuana license to any business within 1,000 feet of a game arcade, library, playground, et cetera. So since Trove is not yet licensed, the 1,000-foot restriction applies. But as discussed by staff, the city of Bellingham has the ability to reduce the 1,000-foot buffer. You can reduce it to 100 feet in regard to game arcades, recreation centers, public transit centers, public parks and libraries, per the recently enacted Marijuana Market Reform Bill. Staff's proposal to reduce this buffer ensures that businesses such as Trove Cannabis that have played by the rules and have filed complete land use applications can obtain their state license. As a practical matter, the buffer reduction puts licensed applicants with vested building permits on equal footing as businesses that have already been licensed. Once a marijuana business is licensed, the 1,000-foot buffer no longer applies. So the proposed buffer reduction would give similar protection to licensed applicants with vested building permits. This is consistent with how the city treats other businesses in terms of protecting them from future zoning changes. It also ensures that Trove and other licensed applicants who abide by state and city rules are not placed in constant jeopardy by changes in neighboring land uses. We strongly urge you to adopt staff's proposed buffer reductions tonight so that Trove will be able to obtain its state license and continue to participate in the enhancement of Samish Way as well as Bellingham's business community. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Is there anybody else here that wishes to speak for or against this proposal?
I'm going to hear us. I'm not sure I, I haven't been following this, so I'm not sure I understand the facts exactly, but given this situation, I'm just wondering why we can't use the variance or reasonable use provisions to grant this person relief without changing the buffer requirements for everybody else. I mean, it does seem like an unfair situation for this person, but I could understand why we'd want to have, you know, bigger buffers for this type of business in general. So that was just more of a question than anything else. Is there some way we can just do a variance or a reasonable use exception for this one applicant? Thanks.
Okay. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak for or against this proposal? Okay, I'll close the public hearing, turn it to staff. Rick, or, you guys want to answer that question?
Thank you. In regards to Ms. Harris's comments, typically, a variance is, you have to have, you have to show hardship, a true hardship. And in this instance, the state has already allowed the local jurisdictions the ability to reduce these after they've come into play. And I think as Mr. Mariner offered tonight, this is nothing more than what we offer any other standard land use or building permit application is. Once you've submitted complete applications, you really become vested, and that's something that the state legislation has trophied for quite some time regarding vested status and vested rights to applicants. So in this case, as Alan mentioned earlier, when they first, they first come in and apply, they do have to meet that 1,000-foot buffer. It's what happens after the fact and something that's out of their control, and we want to make sure that we're allowing a fair playing field for all folks here.
Eric?
Yeah. I think, well, one, I'm going to move at some point here that we adopt this amendment. I think, and I want to just take it out of the realm of marijuana. This is about business. This is about fairness in general. If it was about safety, that'd be one thing, but when a retail operation can open up an arcade in their business, in their own business location, and it's not a danger, then how would we ever conceive that this would be a danger by being within 1,000 foot of the new one? Just that aspect, you know, is kind of ludicrous with it. So I know, just out of fairness, sometimes we get accused of not being business-minded. Well, I think it's both, and I'm going to stand up for businesses when they try to abide by the rules. They do everything right, and they're playing by the rules, and then something like this happens. I think with this amendment, it still keeps everything in place. It puts it in the same category as other businesses, and I think that's how it should be. And so I will move that we, we pass the staff's amendment with this.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. We'll give it to Dan, just because, I don't know, it was close. Okay, hands are up, Dan.
To me, this is an issue around fairness and predictability and consistency. This applicant has played by the rules. The goalposts have changed during this, or they would have changed if we were not to intervene with this amendment, so I'm wholeheartedly seconding the motion by Councilmember Bornerman.
Michael?
The most important thing, I think, is that the 1,000-foot perimeter is in effect at the time that someone applies. That doesn't change. That's state law, that's local law, we're not changing that. Correct and wrong, they already have their building permits from the city. Variance wouldn't make any sense. A variance is to allow you to give a permit. We've given them the permit. They're building the building. There's no further action we can take. This is just because the Cannabis Control Board is looking at our rules and is finding this little gap between when we've already issued all of our permits and when they've issued their license. That's the gap we're fixing. There's nothing, you know, nothing a variance would fix on that. So I think it's unfortunate that someone, that something snuck in this little gap, and I think it's an appropriate way to fix that problem.
Thank you.
I think it's a good idea to support businesses in the city of Bellingham. That's what we want to do, economic development. Yes, it is our job. And one of the things that I think I understand, that the state, the state had to be very safety-conscious when this first came out. However, the state has already said that we can make changes to this rule, so it kind of makes sense for the city of Bellingham to do that step. And I just read in the BBJ that there's almost $1 million of sales in Watcomb County right now in recreational cannabis, and those tax dollars comes, eventually, will be coming back to us. So I would like to encourage business in Bellingham, and I think this is a great step forward for us to do that.
Okay. Anything else before we vote? Mr. Mariner?
I apologize for this
That's all right.
But just because this isn't something that was in the packet, per our charter, and I think we're going to have another example, another situation later on this evening, I need to actually read it.
Okay.
Somebody needs to read it. I'm willing to read it into the record.
Go ahead, Alan.
Okay. So on, at the top of page two of the existing interim zoning ordinance that's in your packet, there are three, the addition of three whereas clauses, and I'll just read them into the record. Whereas, Part 3, Section 301A, subsection B of the Second and Gross Second Substitute House Bill 2136, allows a city, county, or town the authority to reduce the 1,000-foot perimeter except for elementary schools, secondary schools, and playgrounds, and, whereas the city council finds that submittal of a complete city land use or building permit application should provide a vested status, as allowed by the Bellingham Municipal Code, to recreational marijuana producers, processors, or retailers, and, whereas a reduction at this time in the 1,000-foot perimeter for vested recreational marijuana producers, processors, or retailers will not negatively impact the city's civil regulatory enforcement, criminal law enforcement interests, public safety, or public health, and. And then I jump to page seven of the ordinance, and at the end of section 3B, which actually starts on page six of the ordinance, but the exception will appear on the top of page seven. The exception, and this is the substance of the amendment, will read, "Exception. All marijuana producers, processors, and retailers must meet the 1,000-foot perimeter requirement on the date of filing a complete city land use or building permit application to establish their use at a specific site. However, for recreation centers, childcare centers, public transit centers, or any game arcade where admission is not restricted to persons age 21 or older that locate within 1,000-foot perimeter of the site, after the marijuana producer, processor, or retailer has filed a complete city land use or building permit application to establish its use, but before the state Liquor and Cannabis Board has issued a license for the marijuana use, the 1,000-foot perimeter shall be reduced to 100 feet."
Okay. Is everybody clear? All those in favor of the motion will say aye. Aye. While we close, motion carries 7-0. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, we will now go on to our committee reports. First committee up is Public Works Public Safety. Terry Bornerman's the chair.
Thank you, Jean. We had two items before our committee today. The first was a noise variance request from the Washington State Department of Transportation for Interstate 5 paving and guard rail work. The Washington State Department of Transportation, WASDA, is requesting eleven non-consecutive -- nights of relief from the city's noise ordinance for a 2016 project. Work will include milling and filling of asphalt pavement, erosion control, traffic control pavement marking near Iowa Street, and installing guard rails at the Lakeway Drive northbound on-ramp. This project will be bid, allowing the work to occur between June 2016 and September 2016. The contractor will be required to implement nighttime noise mitigation, which has been successful in past projects in our area. The committee recommended approval, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor will say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries seven to zero.
The next item was information only. It was a report on August 29, 2015, of windstorm and discussion of undergrounding power distribution lines. A recent moderate windstorm created numerous power outages in the city and county wide. Thousands of city residences and businesses were without power with some customers for up to four days after the event. Two people died in Everson from generator fumes. A house was destroyed and a generator caused fire, and untold thousands of dollars were lost in spoiled food. In addition, the city lost tax revenues from closed businesses that could not operate without electricity. Puget Sound Energy presented a report on some of the impacts of the windstorm and the cause of the outage. The committee was asked to deliberate on actions that can identify problem areas for future outages, to determine funding sources to mitigate those problems, and to consider legislative and WUTC tariff fixes that would incentivize long-term solutions through undergrounding and transmissions and distribution power lines. Today was just, we had a discussion of this. We ask Puget Sound Energy to come back and present a fuller, a larger report about the incident in the future, and it was for information only. Good discussion.
Aye. Thank you, Terry.
And that's the end of committee report.
Aye. We will now go to Lake Watcomb Reservoir Natural Resources chaired by Dan Hamel.
Thank you, Gene. We had one item today was for information only. This was a report from the Lake Watcomb Policy Group regarding the graphical display options for Lake Watcomb program performance measures. Policymakers asked Lake Watcomb Program staff to improve the availability and understandability of data used to measure progress towards achieving our Lake Watcomb goals. These included the accessibility of information, ease of updating the data, method of presentation, measures at what level of program, organization, or outcome, dashboard approach versus a report approach with embedded links. Policymakers, staff and...or policymakers and staff looked at a couple of different examples, Gainesville, Florida, Seattle, Washington, Edmonton, Alberta, a couple of other ones as well. The main component, or the main big picture questions that came forward were, in designing a program, who is the audience? Is it the public, or is it the city staff, or both? And what is the purpose of displaying the indicators? Is it educational or transparency? So staff will develop some prototype measure displays to illustrate different ways of presenting the program measures, and will make this available to the policy group members at a future date. The next meeting for the policy group will be October 5, where city staff will bring back a discussion of options as suggested by city council for greater cost recovery in the AIS program. That's the end of report and end of committee.
Thank you, Dan. We will now go to committee of the whole, because the Community Economic Development Committee turned in to committee of the whole over the Economic Development Strategic Action Plan. The economic development element of the comprehensive plan was adopted on June 13. Policy ED 6 directed staff to adopt and periodically review a strategic plan to define and prioritize actions to help achieve the city's economic development goals and policies. The Community Economic Development Committee provided direction to staff on September 14, 2015. This afternoon, committee of the whole looked at this plan and recommends approval, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor will say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. The next item is an ordinance to transportation network companies to the Bellingham Municipal Code. We had a lengthy discussion this afternoon. Staff presented an ordinance that adds chapter to the Bellingham Municipal Code for transportation companies. TNCs offer commercial transportation services using online-enabled digital platforms to connect passenger drivers using their personal vehicles. This afternoon, there was a couple motions. One of the motions was to fingerprint. That failed on a two to five vote. The next motion was to add three years to the background checks, and we have in front of us a sheet of paper that Alan has given us that clears up. Do you want to read that, Alan? Just, I mean, you could, I could read it, but Brian, maybe you read it, so it's pretty clear, but just to...
Brian Heinrich, Mayor's Office. I wondered if there's been some discussion with respect to that insurance requirement...
Go ahead.
Sorry. With respect to the insurance requirement and the amendment made, the RCW limits that at seven years. And so I think from a staff perspective, we'd look for some greater clarity on exactly how that may read, because we don't want...I don't think we want to adopt something that's in conflict with itself. So I think we're looking for some, for some direction. This is the...what you see up here is what it would have been amended to earlier, and then...so I guess I'm looking for direction from you on how you'd like to proceed from here so that we do this right the first time.
Okay. Well, Michael, you made the motion. Go ahead.
I would still move that we make this amendment. I think there's an out written in the language of the law which says, "We do a 10-year background check unless prohibited by law." So if there's any conflict with any law, we drop down to whatever period is permitted. So I think that we currently have a 10-year background check, and we should stick with that standard, because other companies, taxi companies, will still be using the 10-year period. We need to have them be the same.
Eric.
I think as somebody who had voted in the affirmative, I can make a motion to change this. Is that correct? In which case, I will move that we go back to the original seven years, because it fits within context of the law.
Point of order, I just made a motion. We need to...
Yes, yeah, you will go with the motion that you made. The motion, the first motion was to leave it the way it is. Even after you've heard what has been said, I don't understand.
I'm not sure what the conflict is. I don't see it yet.
You want to elaborate, Brian?
Yeah, sure. So in that, the line that regains the criminal background check says, "No less than 10 years of database history," and I...it is currently prohibited by state law, which is the RCW, and the maximum then would be seven years. I think we're just looking for some clarity so that which law are we pointing to?
Our state law is seven years. Is that correct?
Correct. That's correct.
Okay, that pretty well sums it. Anyway, was your motion seconded, Michael?
It was this afternoon. I have another question, though.
Well, if it hasn't been seconded, go ahead.
Well, I'm just wondering, is our current statute for taxis therefore in violation of state law?
That is a good question.
When our police do a background check, are they doing a 10-year check, or are they doing a seven-year check?
Well, so when we currently do a background check for taxi cabs, for hire vehicles, we're, again, Matt referenced this, and we talked a little bit about it earlier, we're using Bellingham Police, their Watcomb Police records, Watcomb County Sheriff, Municipal Court. So we're using, that's more of a criminal background check. This is a reference to consumer background checks, which is what, that's one of the distinctions, and that's what RCW calls out.
It says a criminal background check shall include...this is a criminal background check.
Right. And what current law is, I believe when we focus on the RCW on this, it's referencing a consumer background check. That's actually in the RCW language. Now, if we want to make sure that the taxi cab and for hire vehicle section, if we want that, you've asked us to come back and make some recommendations there, we can certainly align those so that we're both chapters 6.54 and 6.55 when this is adopted, or if it's adopted. We can make sure that they're in alignment with one another. But the concern is how we're referencing the number of years that you're allowed to go back. Does that make sense?
You said the prohibition in state law had to do with consumer background checks. These are criminal background checks. Why are we speaking about them as the same thing?
I believe that the industry standard uses consumer background checks, and so those are going to, they're different ways to look at, in many cases, the same information.
I really don't care what someone's consumer background is. I want their criminal background checked.
Okay. Let's go back to the motion that was made. Is there a second to Michael's motion? Okay, no second? Is there a second to Terry's motion?
Second.
Roxanne, seconded? Jack? Do you have a comment?
Yeah, I guess I have a comment. I just am kind of curious as to if this is such a conflict, why wouldn't we not consider going back to just having the police go and do the background checks instead of having a private company regulate itself?
Okay.
I...I mean, this is, this is a perfect example of how it falls apart.
Okay. Terry's made the original motion. Roxanne, seconded. Any further discussion on the motion?
Restate the motion.
Go ahead, Terry.
Okay. My motion is that we adopt the ordinance in our packet as written by staff.
Aye.
Which was the original motion.
Aye.
About what's going on here?
That's...
Will you change from ten years back to the seven years?
Back to the seven years, yeah.
Back to the seven years, yeah. Back to the original one. This was that.
Right.
Yeah. You have to read that?
Do you...
Okay.
It's back to the seven years, so is it any change then?
But there's additional...
Okay.
Okay, go ahead. Yeah. Go ahead.
Sorry, with that...
That was Dale. Thank you, Dale, wherever you are.
Thank you. Sorry. So the ordinance would include this amendment that I'm going to read. It's on page four of the ordinance, BMC 6.55.050 subsection C. The second, third, and fourth sentences would be changed, modified, from what they are in the Agenda Bill packet to read as follows. "The criminal background check shall include a search of no less than seven years of database history unless prohibited by law, in which case the duration of the search shall be the maximum number of years permitted by law. The criminal background check shall include local, state, and national criminal history databases and national and state sex offender registries. Any person who is on a sex offender registry or who has been convicted within the time period covered by the background check of crimes involving driving under the influence of alcohol or controlled substances, fraud, sexual offenses, property damage, or theft, acts of violence, acts of terror, or use of a motor vehicle to commit a felony shall not be permitted to act as a TNC driver on the TNC's digital network."
Okay. Thank you, Alan. Jack.
I've mentioned what my concerns are about this, but I wanted to do that in an evening session because people might be watching, and I'd like to be able to explain my vote. I really don't feel like it's appropriate for the council to take actions where we allow private industry to go and regulate itself. I think we've had plenty of examples over the years, both locally and nationally, of how that really is not a very good model, and that we, you know, it can work. Obviously, it can work, but we see from time to, you know, time and time again where it doesn't work. And I just simply don't feel comfortable with us moving forward with this type of approach. I'm very in favor of rideshare programs. I think that it's a, you know, it's definitely an up-and-coming thing, and I think it will be a very good thing for the community. I just don't like the way that we have this set up where it's self-regulating.
Okay. Thank you, Jack. All those in favor of the motion will say aye. Aye. All opposed?
No and no. No.
No and no and no. Motion carries five to two. Or four to three. Yes. Jack did it twice, and Michael did it once, but he only gets one. Nice try. As the clock ticks, the old boy keeps trying. That's okay. Yes, sir.
Unfortunately, didn't recognize me and my hand up before the vote. It's okay.
That's all right.
Just to explain my reason for no.
That's fine.
It doesn't change the outcome. I think we just adopted a double standard, a weaker standard for transportation network companies than taxi cabs. That's bad lawmaking. We didn't need to do that. We didn't need to do that tonight. I also think there's a confusion between consumer background checks and criminal background checks, which I don't feel I understand tonight, and I don't want to be bound by a confusion. I'd rather be sure. So again, in my mind, it's bad lawmaking to vote on something that you don't think is, as you understand it.
Thank you. We will now go to the next item, which is a resolution extending the public access P designation for BTV 10 through December 31, 2016. BTV 10 was temporarily designated as a public access television station in addition to its existing designation as education government purpose. The designation will expire on October 2015. The Access Bellingham Training Program will continue through the end of 2015. Staff requests that public access designation be extended through 2016 to extend the time period for public participation in developing and submitting comment, content. This afternoon, committee recommends approval, and I so move. Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor will say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. The next, we had a discussion of the 2016 legislative agenda on page 55 and 56. Now, if I remember right, we suggested, Michael, you suggested, bring up what you suggested. I forgot to write it down. You wrote it down, okay. The mayor and Brian have it. It was something to do about rail safety.
Brian Heinrich, Mayor's Office. It had to do with pursuing, Michael, help me out, restoration and cleanup efforts in the case of rail car spill.
Yeah, it's been identified that one of the gaps in federal and state law is who's responsible for the long-term cleanup and restoration efforts if there's an accident.
Okay, and there was also a discussion on a couple other items, wasn't there? Just, Jack, you had a couple? I'm sorry, I didn't write it down. I should have. I was too busy blotching my cut face.
We talked a little bit about the governor's action, climate action plans, how we might support that, and I'm sorry I don't have my notes either. There was one other thing. Jack, do you recall?
Yeah, let's see. One one had to do about possibility of undergrounding issues.
Yeah.
And...
Something like that.
Another one I had here.
Yeah, I think those were the two.
And I brought up about the coal strip mining.
Yeah.
The power plant in Montana.
Okay. That list will be coming back.
That's correct.
That's correct. Yes. Okay. The next item is approval of the September 14 minutes of the evening session.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor will say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. We now go to hold our new business. Now, we got to revisit. Terry, what you brought up this afternoon?
What I brought up was about the jail and the non-action.
Yes.
Despite all the work that we put into presenting amendments to the county about the jail so that we could participate and sign in on an inter-local agreement that we haven't heard anything, and I just voiced the fact that, you know, we will wait till see for tomorrow night. I guess that's where it came out. We'll wait to see how things come out, to see if it is addressed. We hope it's addressed, and we hopes it's adopted, that we want to participate with the county, but it's got to be on something that is fair and equitable for the citizens of Bellingham.
Okay.
So that's pretty much it.
Thank you, Terry. Any other older new business? Okay, we will now go to executive session. We had one item, potential litigation. Staff provided information on a potential litigation matter. Direction given, no action taken. Mayor's report.
The first thing is tomorrow night, as Terry mentioned, there's going to be a consideration of Red Brown's resolution and potentially the jail use agreement that the city has sent to the county, and we don't know what the outcome of that will be. I didn't know if everybody had read... I didn't know if everybody had read Red's, so that might be a good thing for us to send out to you, so you could read it.
Yes.
Were there copies for everybody? Okay, so there's copies that we're sending out to you. Secondly, coal strips come up a couple times, and I have had a meeting both with PSC and with the Sierra Club, and have examples of letters that other communities have written. And interestingly enough, both PSC and the Sierra Club handed me the same letter to see if we would like to consider it. It's a letter that was written by the city of Olympia. So there's, there's two options. One is the letter, and I don't know enough about the legislation to make a recommendation on the second option. I'm perfectly comfortable writing the letter. It's similar but not the same as the letter that we originally did about PSC divesting of coal wire power. The second option is to intervene. There was a request to intervene on behalf of the, is it the Sierra Club, Brian? And I don't have enough information to make that kind of a recommendation to you, so I'm going to send the letter out to you. I just thought about it this afternoon when Jack brought it up. I'll have the letter sent to you tomorrow, and you guys can look at it and see what you think. And if you want to have a more vigorous discussion after that about intervention and things like that, then you can go ahead and do that, too. But I think the letter was something that sounded like would, would be a positive thing to do.
Okay.
So we'll send you the letter tomorrow.
Okay. Sounds good.
And then congratulations to Public Works for opening the bridge early. There you go, Ted, thanks.
Very welcome, welcome.
And all the employees that worked on that. Maybe it's because of where I work sometimes, down in that section of Old Town, but I heard a lot about it. So anyway, I think they did really good work and opened it ahead of schedule.
Way ahead of schedule. It was December, wasn't it?
Well, good.
I'm glad, because I went out on a limb. Everybody kept peppering me at work, and I said, "It'll be open soon." Good job.
Well, soon as...
I lied, because I had absolutely no idea.
And then you didn't. Isn't that good? I only have three informational appointments to share with you. One is WWU student representative McKenzie Dent to the mayor's neighborhood advisory committee, appointment of Sarah Holliday to the tourism commission, and then also mayor's appointment of Jeremy Ferreira to the Bellingham Sister Cities Board. He has a very close relationship with the Japanese community and has lived in Japan and is very excited about lending his support to making sure that our Sister Cities organization and our city government work together. So that was good. That's all.
Are any of you in the audience tonight who are being appointed? McKenzie Dent, thank you very much for serving.
I'm going to be appointed. I think I already did that, so, okay.
Thank you very much. Billy had a question.
Yes, Jack.
On the last two, the tourism one and the Sister Cities one, I noticed that the residency was not within the city limits. One was from Linden, the other one was from out in the UGA, and...
Yeah, the tourism bureau is 50/50, so 50 from the county, 50 from the city, 50 percent. So this met the requirements, so that person did not have to live in Bellingham, since there's a 50 percent from the county, too.
So what does the executive then appoint people that are, live within the city?
No.
I mean, I would think that you would appoint the people that were in the city, but...
Well, I guess I was lucky, and I got to appoint people from the county.
Jack, for that particular commission, it's often difficult to find people who run hotels who necessarily live in Bellingham. They run hotels in Bellingham, but they may not live here. I think this is one of those cases. She's run several hotels in Bellingham. She doesn't happen to live in the city limits.
I see.
Yeah, we changed that years ago on the LTAC committee.
And I did ask about that, Jack. I asked about both of the ones I saw that weren't. And then Sister Cities is not, there's not a residency requirement.
Okay, yeah, because it's, sometimes it is an issue for us.
Yeah, and I always, I always check that, because I don't want to be appointing people that, that I have to unappoint.
Consent agenda.
Move approval.
Second. Motion been made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor will say aye. Aye. All opposed, motion carries seven to zero. Final consideration of ordinances.
Agenda Bill 20963, an ordinance amending the 2015-2016 adopted budget, increasing revenue in the street fund by $4 million as a result of $3,500,000 proceeds from an intergovernmental loan, an award of a $500,000 grant, and appropriating $4 million for street lighting system improvements, transferring $295,000 from street fund reserves to the governmental debt services fund, and appropriating transferred funds for debt service payments.
Move third and final.
Second.
Second, any discussion? Pro call.
Roxanne Murphy.
Aye.
Pinky Vargas.
Aye.
Jack Weiss.
Aye.
Terry Bornham.
Aye.
Dan Hamel.
Aye.
Jean Knutson.
Aye.
Michael Lillquist.
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero. Ordinance 20964, an ordinance authorizing an inter-fund loan of $1,350,000 from the solid waste fund to the water fund, and amending the 2015-2016 adopted budget in the water fund by appropriating $1,350,000 in the water fund for principal repayment.
Move third and final.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, any discussion? Pro call.
Pinky Vargas.
Aye.
Jack Weiss.
Aye.
Terry Bornham.
Aye.
Dan Hamel.
Aye.
Jean Knutson.
Aye.
Michael Lillquist.
Aye.
Roxanne Murphy.
Aye.
Ordinance passes seven to zero. Agenda Bill 20965, an ordinance of the city of Bellingham, Washington, authorizing the issuance of a water and sewer revenue refunding bond of the city in the principal amount of not to exceed $4,200,000 to refund outstanding water and sewer revenue bonds, make a deposit to the reserve account if required, and pay cost of issuance, delegating authority to approve the sale and final terms of the bond, and reserving the right to issue revenue refunding bonds on a parity with the bond upon compliance with certain conditions.
Move third and final.
Second.
Pro call.
Jack Weiss.
Aye.
Terry Bornham.
Aye.
Dan Hamel.
Aye.
Jean Knutson.
Aye.
Michael Lillquist.
Aye.
Roxanne Murphy.
Aye.
Pinky Vargas.
Aye.
Ordinance passes seven to zero.
Okay, it's nice to know, Elizabeth, if you need backup, Alan read into the record three things tonight real well, so you can talk to him afterward. No, no, you didn't. Okay, don't forget, next Monday night is our special meeting, October 5th, in the council chambers at 7:00. And the next meeting, the Bellingham City Council, is October 12, 2015. Meeting adjourned.